Get to my right location here. I'm going, hold on. The Monday, February 28th, 2022 Meeting of the Market City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here, thank you. Commissioners, we have an agenda this evening? Do we have a motion? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, motion to accept the agenda as written.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. I do not have any announcements for this evening, so we will roll right into the boards and committees. Item one, we have one appointment for consideration. Nathan Frishkorn, I apologize if I said that wrong, to the Planning Commission for an unexpired term ending 2/15/25. Do we have a motion on this appointment, Commissioners? Commissioner Hill?
I move that we appoint Nathan Frishkorn to the Planning Commission for the unexpired term.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Discussion, Commissioner Hill?
I'm really glad that Nate is stepping up and really look forward to his contributions to the Planning Commission.
Great, and anything, Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, I'd echo that, and I'm glad that we have, we got two vacancies in the Planning Commission, which is, you know, probably arguably the most critical and kind of high stakes appointed board that we have. So it's great to see one of those vacancies getting filled by somebody with a lot of knowledge and a strong skill set.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? All right, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Congratulations, Nate. We've got our next agenda item here. We have two reappointments. We've got Christina Behrens and Mark Schneider. Do we have a motion on this item, Commissioners? Mr. Hanley?
I motion that reappoint Christina Behrens to the Market Public Art Commission and Mark Schneider to the Board of Review for a term, or further terms expiring.
Do we have a second on that motion? Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
Just thanks again for continuing to serve.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address. If you'd like to make a public comment, please approach the podium.
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street, Marquette, Michigan. I wrote an email to all the Commissioners, and I also put this on Facebook, but I need to talk about the request for the city to execute the memorandum of understanding that would bind it to the NMU Foundation and Duke LifePoint as they move forward on the old hospital property. My recommendation is to reject the version, this version of the memorandum of understanding and write a new one that clearly limits the liability and responsibility of the city and puts responsibility for the environmental cleanup on the current owner, Duke LifePoint, and its successor in interest, the NMU Foundation. I went through the memorandum of understanding in great detail and noted that there are obligations for financial contributions from the city that right now they don't have. For example, the city right now doesn't have any liability associated with the former hospital property, has no financial obligation associated with the former hospital property, and the city does collect taxes, although de minimis taxes, but it does get taxes from it. This memorandum of understanding contemplates the city contributing financially to the proposed development with no possibility of collecting additional tax money under the Brownfield Plan for literally decades. And the memorandum of understanding is not just a piece of paper that says this is likely to happen. It has very specific requirements for the city to pay $52,900 for assessments that I see no reason why should not be made by Duke LifePoint. There is a line in there, paragraph 2A3 lies, "The city may have to assume ownership and thus liability for environmental hazards of the property as exists." I can't stress the point now that where we are with this property is undesirable, but where this deal is heading with is giving obligations to the city that it does not have right now. And at one point in time, people stood up in front of here and offered the Cliffstyle Chemical property to the city for a dollar, and people thought it was a really, really good deal. And it ended up a nightmare, costing the city hundreds of thousands of dollars with environmental liability associated with every move it makes. So I would strongly recommend that this memorandum of understanding be rejected in favor of one that clearly limits the city's liability and under no circumstances allows for the city to accept responsibility for that property, either for ownership or for environmental cleanup. Because this is a slippery slope, and a lot of people say a memorandum of understanding is just an understanding, it's no big deal. And I'm here to tell you, this thing is loaded with money that the city would have to pay it doesn't have. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Tony Boyle, 401 West Michigan Street in Marquette. I'd just like to also speak today on the memorandum of understanding. Going through the text today, I wish I had more time to look through it, but, you know, given the conversation that was happening two weeks ago, I guess I expected a little more detail. You know, expectations that the city has, goals that the city has for the property, you know, not just a checkbox to, you know, have a developer just say, yeah, we, you know, we provided some affordable housing, it's there, there's a few units. Actually communicating the needs of the city and its residents, I think would help in the long term for moving this project forward. I think we, as a community, also need just more guarantees that this is going to be used for what we need, like, I mean, guys, it's a big deal, so consider that, thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Mayor Smith and Commission members. I attended your February 14th work session where the former UP Health System redevelopment was discussed.
Excuse me, name and address, please. I know who you are, but you gotta, yeah.
Mike Smith, 130 West Washington, Suite L12. This could be an opportunity for the city of Marquette to invest in the community and all its citizens could benefit. I very much appreciated the thoughtful discussion, thoughtful discussion and ideas from Commissioners on how this could be accomplished. I would like to offer the following for your consideration. Again, back to the details. You already discussed attainable and/or affordable and/or senior housing to some extent in this redevelopment. Green building standards, I think that was discussed also this, on the February 14th. During the construction, one consideration I would ask is the preference to those who have graduated or are currently participating in a certified Department of Labor apprenticeship. You'll have the safest, best trained folks doing that construction in your city, reinvesting in your city, local people. And also the attachment of the city of Marquette's prevailing wage policy. This is very important, I believe, again, reinvesting in those who are investing every day paying taxes here in the city of Marquette. So please consider those items when you consider this MOU. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no additional comment, public comment is now closed. Next, we have our consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion on consent? Commissioner Davis?
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
And a second, Pro Tem Mayor?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to new business. Item number four, we have the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority Millage. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. The Iron Ore Heritage Trail is a 47-mile, multi-use, year-round trail with nine trailheads that connects communities and people to the region's historic sites and human stories. The trail was designed for walkers, bikers, runners, inline skaters, wanderers, horseback riders, people in wheelchairs, snowmobilers, history buffs, ORVs, cross-country skiers, shutterbugs, and explorers. The trail follows mostly abandoned railroad corridors that were used used to bring lumber to furnaces and forges and iron ore to the Lake Superior Harbor. The Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority is seeking a renewal of their millage, 0.1970 mills, for six years and will be submitting ballot language to the county clerk for the August 2022 election. The millage is estimated to raise $123,000 per year in the city of Marquette and a total of $320,000 across all of the member municipalities, including the city of Ishbaming, the city of Nagone, Marquette Township, Chocole Township, and Tilden Township. The authority has asked the Marquette City Commission to pass a resolution of support for the millage effort. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, adopt the resolution supporting the city of Marquette's participation in the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority and their upcoming ballot initiative and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
And do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to adopt the resolution supporting the city of Marquette's participation in the Iron Ore Heritage Recreation Authority and their upcoming ballot initiative and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
And Pro Tem Hill? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hill. Old habits stay hard.
I second that motion.
And any discussion, Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think only that it's a remarkable organization that has done a remarkable amount of good, and it's really one of those examples, I think, of when government actually works and does a job that everybody can recognize the value of, so thank you.
Commissioner Hill, any discussion?
Wholehearted support for the reasons that Commissioner Stonehouse gave and the fact that it brings together communities over this long trail and that they're even planning to expand and go even further out to hopefully Lakeland and land, which would be just even adding to the fun. So I'm really glad that it's in front of us today.
Any discussion by other Commissioners? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would agree, I think this is a really positive thing, and just a couple of quick points I did want to make. First of all, I think this is a great, the Iron Ore Heritage Trail is a great example of regional cooperation with regards to parks and recreation, which I think we need more of. Also, I think this is definitely, you know, consistent, given that we are also going to be seeing the extension of the Iron Ore Heritage Trail to the Rosewood Walkway in the near future. That's great to see, so this is serving city residents as well as folks, you know, points west in Marquette County. And this is a millage renewal, so we're not voting for like a tactic, raise anybody's taxes here, right? This is just renewing the current millage of .1970 mills for six years. And of course, will be subject to voter approval.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to add that I see a lot of good coming from this organization, so I wanted to thank Carol who's here. And I agree that this is an example of how many communities can work together on a common project, often the lake shore is one of those ways, and then I think the Iron Ore Heritage Trail is another one of those examples. So thank you for giving us something that we can really highlight and focus on and be proud of. We really appreciate it.
All right, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote. City Clerk?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hanley?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mayor?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Onto our final item of new business here. Number five, memorandum of understanding, formal, former hospital redevelopment. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The NMU Foundation is leading a consortium of public and private partners to facilitate the redevelopment of the former Marquette General Hospital. The proposed project would remove the buildings on the property, with the possible exception of the parking deck, to provide for an effective reconfiguration and redevelopment. The estimated level of private investment in this project is $160 million. During a special meeting held on February 14th, 2022, the NMU Foundation introduced this project to the city commission and the Marquette community and began the process of seeking feedback on the upcoming Brownfield Plan. The redevelopment of this property will require a significant amount of Brownfield tax increment financing capture to reimburse anticipated eligible activities, including the demolition of obsolete buildings, asbestos abatement, site preparation, and public infrastructure work. The total amount of projected capture is estimated at $39 million over a period of 15 years. A memorandum of understanding has been drafted in order to provide an assurance of support for external funding opportunities and to detail city expectations for the upcoming request for proposals process, which will identify a master developer for the project. Feedback from the special meeting has been incorporated into the memorandum of understanding. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, do we have a motion on this item? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I will approve the memorandum, excuse me. I motion to approve the memorandum of understanding and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Davis?
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Stonehouse, discussion?
Well, Your Honor, I think as we discussed during the work session, this is a centennial project. This is a once in a century opportunity to take a building this large, this disused, and to make it part of our, really our city's present and our city's future. And it is, it's just an opportunity that doesn't come along every month, doesn't come along every couple of years. This building's been abandoned now for, I think, going on a decade. And all of us had hoped that something would magically happen there, and nothing magically happened. And this is an opportunity through the good graces of Northern Michigan University and I think a very foresighted Board of Control to grab a hold of that building and to make it valuable not only for the university, but for the entire city of Marquette. And it's one that I don't want to see us miss, Your Honor. Thank you.
Discussion, Commissioner Davis?
I will certainly agree with Commissioner Stonehouse. I feel that this is one of the best ways that we can address this property. I do want to, and I just want to clarify for some of the earlier comments that the $52,900 for environmental and predevelopment expenses has already been approved and will be coming out of the Brownfield revolving fund. Am I correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and then, secondly, in the agreement or the memorandum of understanding under 2A, number three, additional Brownfield incentives, I found the language just a little confusing. I asked the city manager to explain it to me earlier today, and I thought maybe if the city manager could just talk about that a little bit for the public.
Certainly, and this was something that had been mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, and in further discussion. So additional Brownfield incentives, you know, may include some other opportunities to address some of the affordable housing additions and, you know, ideas that we have if the development does not come out with something that is, I guess, acceptable or appealing to meet our goal of having some more affordable housing. So this could be in the form of potentially down payment assistance, things like that, but this does offer the opportunity, if needed, for us to do that and add more onto that TIF capture. Does that help clarify the question? Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Hanley?
Thank you. I did want to talk a little bit about the details of this. I do think that during the meeting, we all strived to get at least percentages for housing in there, and I feel we're being a little vague by just saying that they should follow the things that are laid out in the housing document. Not that the housing document's bad, I just think that if we leave it open to interpretation, it can be interpreted pretty low, which scares me. Is there a reason that we did not bring that up or put anything in specificity into there?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a great question, by the way, and I can completely understand that and appreciate that. So what our intent was on this is to leave it a little bit more open. We are not the developers, and we don't have all of the ideas or plans. So we are leaving this more with the opportunity for the developer to come with a proposal or a project that may meet needs or exceed our expectations or our needs for affordable housing or any other idea of the such. So we really wanted to leave it open while also leaving the opportunity for us to use other Brownfield incentives that I just mentioned and have that ability to really take that into our own hands if we need to. But really allowing the developers to provide us with the ideas or the solutions without limiting them, because it may not fit into that box with that percentage, but may meet other needs or exceed them.
I just feel like we're setting ourselves up to be underwhelmed rather than overwhelmed in that scenario, more than likely. If they're given a chance, they're not going to give us more affordable housing, for the most part.
We don't know that.
That's true, I guess. Then if we're going to go to the other thing that I stand on, I noticed that we, in, so it's section 2A, number four, the end sentence, "City construction contracts will adhere to Commission Policy 199-02", which would be the prevailing wage contract. I was wondering if we are limiting that to that versus the whole Brownfield for a reason? I've noticed that many other areas, including the entire state of California when they did TIFs, any state-funded Brownfield project included prevailing wage across the entirety of the project. So I don't think it's an overreach for us to also look for a state-funded with city help and city projects to be fully prevailing waged if done in the city. Obviously, I'm talking about the Brownfield portion of this event in this scenario. Is there a way to incorporate that into this?
It's, there's certainly, you know, if there's an amendment that would like to be proposed, obviously, certainly we can talk about that. I do think that we're also talking, again, at having the developers have the opportunity to present something to us and be able to see what they can come up with. You know, we also have the ability to work in some of this specific language in other forms or other documents, such as the Brownfield Plan or any other development plan that would come before us. This is more left to be a little bit more open to see what we can be presented with.
Okay, so even though this is ambiguous, we can still look at the Brownfield and say, we would like to require it across the entirety of the Brownfield?
I think that there's a more appropriate document to look at, other than the MOU.
Okay. Other than that, I do like the clarification on the city ownership thing, that makes more sense now. I would like to have you clarify in the meeting why we rushed the MOU and, I mean, and why it was put out so fast without more discussion between the staff or the staff and us on what we wanted to see in it? Is there a reason we put it forth so fast?
Certainly, so this did come out as a result of having a meeting with the NMU Foundation on Thursday afternoon. The timeline is bumped up because of other deadlines coming forward for the foundation. The property closure has to be completed by, I believe, the end of May. And then in between there, there needs to be a Brownfield Plan that's presented, but also allowing for enough time for that RFQ to be out there and to solicit enough interest and time to really investigate those proposals that do come forward with the foundation. So it's allowing more of a timeline for that RFQ and having some more quality people to come out.
Which makes complete sense. All right, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Anyone else for discussion? Mr. Bonzal?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I am glad that we were able to include, you know, specific requests for affordable and workforce housing as a minimum requirement for this project, as described in the Ad Hoc Housing Committee report. I definitely understand, you know, Commissioner Hanley, you know, your concerns about why are we not asking for a more specific, like, say, 30% affordable or workforce housing? I think, you know, I understand the point that the city manager is making, though, where at this stage, it may make more sense to give the developer more flexibility to kind of be creative and then require those firm commitments, those more specific commitments in the Brownfield Plan before we end up approving that. I think that might be more appropriate, and I think the same thing might apply to the prevailing wage question. Although I definitely agree with you that we need firm commitments on both of those things, or at least I certainly agree that we need firm commitments on both of those things before approving any Brownfield Plan in the next few weeks or months. The question I had was actually about the same section that Commissioner Davis asked about. I was curious about the line, quote, "as well as property acquisition and property transfer assistance, which may require city ownership of affected property." I know that was also a concern that was brought up in public comment. Could you describe in some more detail there what that means on page two?
You know, if you don't mind, Assistant City Manager Sean Havens has been having conversations with our Brownfield consultant on what those solutions would be, but some of those would be, I would believe, what be, but some of those would be, I would believe, what down payment assistance programs potentially or any other, you know, housing opportunities that we would be taking ownership of. Did you have further specifics?
Yeah. I don't necessarily have exact specifics, but there are certain tools under the Act 381, funding that can only be unlocked if a property is coming out of public ownership, whether that is city or land bank ownership. You know, if you'll recall, the Renovaria proposal we discussed a few months ago, that would have required some involvement with the land bank to transfer those properties to people with down payment assistance. So there, there is that mechanism that could be available for this project to help make up, you know, a portion of the affordable housing. That would be after the property was developed. We could look at using kind of like pass-through funds, but pass-through property to accomplish the affordable housing goals.
Okay, so I, I appreciate that. Like, I guess my question is, what would that look like specifically and what kind of potential liability then would the city be? I mean, are you going to literally have two people sitting at a table, like, the city signs on the dotted line and then somebody else signs on the dotted line 10 seconds later? I mean, how would that, that actually look?
Right, right now, we're just exploring those opportunities, and it was included in the memorandum of understanding to recognize that, I believe. The liability, I believe, would be non-existent because we'd be discussing a property post-development, not, you know, a portion of the property as it stands right now with a building on it or even vacant land. It would be part of the developed property that could be earmarked for affordable housing or workforce housing in some fashion. This memorandum of understanding doesn't get into that level of detail. It just states that this is something that could be incorporated in the future.
Okay, so just to, so I, I understand. What you're saying is essentially the city would just be a short-term kind of pass-through potentially and that we wouldn't be assuming any liability because that wouldn't happen potentially until after development had been completed, cleanup and demolition had been completed. Is that accurate?
Absolutely. I think the intention for this would be, you know, you have a brand-new unit of housing. The city has temporary legal ownership of it so that we're able to transfer it to somebody who might need down payment assistance, and the TIF funding could help with that. It's just that with these kind of funding, the public ownership is a component of it.
Okay, thanks. And one other question with regards to that. Have we contacted or had any discussions with the county land bank about potentially, you know, working with them on that? Because I think that, if I'm not mistaken, that they have also been a pass-through for some, you know, more affordable housing developments in the community.
You know, one thing about this is we want to see what the developer can offer for affordable housing first. This is so preliminary to, you know, engagement and discussions. I can tell you that the land bank is a part of our intergovernmental housing task force at the county level that we're on, and, you know, I just had a, a meeting of that last week, and I will be bringing portions of this project to that group as it is relevant. It's just so early right now, it hasn't necessarily been the right time.
Okay.
But rest assured, they will be a part of the conversation. I think they might have to be. You know, I don't know if, you know, if it's exactly city ownership that we have to deal with or land bank ownership. Like I said, there's a lot of details to be explored there, and we're really trying to, to figure them all out.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, that makes me feel better. I think that, you know, we're, we're not looking at any liability for the city that's being created by that, that provision. And I, I would also agree that we, I, I would agree and kind of, I guess, caution that we don't want to use this possibility of things like down payment assistance or other incentives as like a way for a developer to kind of, for lack of a better term, like, kind of weasel out of making firm commitments on having affordable housing included in the property or in the, in the main development itself. I guess at least that's my, my, my standpoint on that. I don't know. Madam City Manager, it looks like you might have something you want to say.
This is truly a placeholder, and it's here to facilitate future discussions and possibilities on this. And it is, it is almost our, you know, way to, to address things that, that may not be addressed, but it is by no means a backup plan for a developer. Not meant to be.
The NMU Foundation team did a really good job of limiting the TIF capture to 15 years. So this is the kind of thing that's unlocked by that because there's more flexibility in the plan. So we just want to make sure it's a tool in our toolbox.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, thank you both for that clarification. I don't have any other questions. The, the other, the only thing I wanted to say is to just read a couple of things here, I guess more for the benefit of folks who are maybe watching the meeting or curious about what memorandum, what a memorandum of understanding actually means. So on page one, we see that says that this is not a contract or an otherwise legally binding instrument and does not give rise to any legally binding obligation on the part of the parties. And then if we go to page three, on the bottom, "Any future binding contract between the parties," basically a brownfield plan most likely, "will require the approval by resolution of the Marquette City Commission and the City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority." So just want to make that clear that this is just the first step in the process, and I, I do hope to see more and expect to see more firm binding commitments in the future when we consider the brownfield plan. Thank you.
Other discussion for Tim Mayor?
I'll be real quick, going actually off of what Commissioner Bonsell was talking about. Just the line prior to the last one he just read there is understood to be an expression of the intent of the parties to attempt in good faith to negotiate and reach a binding agreement. I was going to read that line as well that Commissioner Bonsell just read, but, you know, this, this isn't legally binding for us, but I just want to also frame this a little differently, too. It's not legally binding for the other parties as well. This is really a, a good faith document. And I think if I look at page three here, under the development plan itself, item C, it says, "Goals and objectives." So I mean, I think we could all agree that there's a lot more detail we would want, but as our city manager kind of pointed out, we can figure that out and get all those details in an actual brownfield plan, and it doesn't necessarily need to be in this document. But that's all I wanted to say.
Commissioner Hilde, do you have a comment?
I do. Well, questions, too. Where to start? So I just want to step back again, sort of for the benefit of folks. This, that the role of the city is narrow here in relation to our project partners. And so, correct me if I'm, where I get this, but there's a piece of property, it's owned by a company, the company is going to have an arrangement with the NMU Foundation. The NMU Foundation is going to issue an request for a proposal for a company to, another company to then come and develop the site. As part of that agreement, that company has to prove that it has the finances to finish the job in approximately seven years at a cost of, the total cost of about $160 million. Is that accurate? Did I get that right?
Sounds fair.
So, so that's, that's what we're talking about here, okay? And then what the NMU Foundation, the company that owns the property, and the developer are going to do is pretty much up to them. In fact, it is up to them, I should say. And, and what, but understanding how significant this is, as Commissioner Stonehouse described, we are, through this memorandum of understanding, bringing community values into this agreement. And that, those values include the things that are listed on page three under development plan. Is that correct? That's what we're talking about? And, and there's goals and objectives that have not, but then have not been identified, although then there's affordable and workplace, workforce housing as described in the recommendations of the Ad hoc Housing Committee Report. Now, I was just looking, the recommendations of the Ad hoc Housing Committee Report also don't have percentages. They also just make descriptions. They don't say that we want them to be any particular amount of housing. We're just, it was recognizing that there was a need. So, and certainly, I think this is the number one issue in the community, is what, how are we going to, I don't know, the word is grow or bring about better housing, and then how is that housing going to be built and constructed? We heard that comment today. So how, could someone just, I know this has been said, but just one more time, how does this memorandum of understanding help us meet those goals? What would be the process that, by which that would happen?
So I believe that the, the goals and objectives that are listed here are the priorities or, you know, expectations that here are then going to be, you know, obviously, it'd be a memorandum of understanding between the city, brownfield, and also the NMU Foundation. And these would be expected to be communicated to the master developers in the RFQ process.
So when would we, will, when does the city, when's the commission going to see those? I don't under, I guess I'm, I'm missing that step.
I think that this is also serving as like the, the good faith document that goes forward and communicates these. I think the RFQ will be then made public, and then also it goes through the process of receiving those RFQs, and then the NMU Foundation, as it states, I believe, in here, evaluates those and decides on those. They're, they are the ones that are solely deciding on this. That is their investment.
Okay. So I've had a number of folks approach me in the last two weeks concerned about, just frankly, about NMU's transparency. And, and not for me, I'm just reflecting what the public has said to me. I just want to, and so I, I guess I, I don't know if we want to invite the foundation to have any comment on this or how, but it was certainly presented to me that there was a lot of concerns that the NMU Foundation would, what's, what's holding them accountable to, well, we have this MOU. I guess, is, is there any further statement about that or, because there's a large amount of money changing hands, and people are concerned that they don't understand how that process is working, and it is a public university. Do we, how do, how, I, I guess I just raise that as a question and whether we want to address that here in this commission or that the NMU Foundation addresses that at some point going forward, but certainly I have heard about that from the public. And I don't know whether we want to address that here or just make it very plain that the NMU Foundation could develop a lot of goodwill if they were clearly transparent about this, what they're also going to be getting out of this, or what this arrangement would entail.
So Commissioner Hill, that's a, I understand that you've heard these concerns. I'm certainly welcome to entertain if the NMU Foundation would like to comment, but they don't, they don't have to at this point if that's something they don't want to. So I'll make that offer known. I see Dave Nyberg moving, maybe, so I just, I wanted to give him the opportunity, wasn't sure. Usually side podium for privileged comment related to a business item. Thank you, Dave. So I think the question is, I mean, obviously, you heard it, but it's, what does that process look like and how will the community be informed? Is that fair?
Yeah, I guess the first comment I'd make is, you know, Brad Canale, CEO of the NMU Foundation, apologizes he couldn't be here as we knew this committee, agenda topic came out pretty quickly. He's out of, out of town on work-related travel. So Commissioner Hill, if I think I've heard you correctly, the, the first thing I wanted to say and then maybe kind of provide an arc, maybe summarizing a lot of what we talked about on February 14th. And I think we have been transparent, we've been very transparent about what our intent is with this process, and that process is to serve as a facilitator to make something happen, to bring relationships and entities together along with resources to facilitate a redevelopment opportunity that to date has not happened. And that stems from conversations, trust-built conversations that we've had with U.P. Health System Marquette, and including the general deal structure of our agreement, which is to acquire the property if and only if we have certain milestones that are achieved. And those milestones described last week, or two weeks ago, rather, in the rearview mirror are environmental due diligence, financial due diligence to understand that this property or this project can be financially viable and beneficial to the NMU campus and the surrounding community, including the neighborhoods immediately adjacent to the site, and that we can select a master developer with the balance sheet and track record and community connectedness that's reasonably appropriate for a project of this size and scope. And so the process that we're, where we're at now in those milestones looking forward is that now we have to go through the process of selecting a master developer. We're having very productive conversations with other entities at the state level and other, and others that may bring additional resources to the table that would even further limit the tax cap, the tax increment financing plan. And by the way, side note to that, as we stated a couple of weeks ago, it truly is our intent to bring this project on the tax rolls as fast as possible, which is why we proposed a very aggressive 15-year recapture period, and that we're only asking for those brownfield-eligible activities that would be made possible through the tax, the added tax value by this project to simply reimburse the, basically, site preparation and demolition. So to previous comments that were made, we're not asking, asking for general fund, we're not, this is, this is money that wouldn't be available to the city but for our engagement and but for this project moving forward to the tune of about $160 to $166 million. So moving forward, in full, you know, in the spirit of full transparency, I want to be very clear, this MOU, which we're very grateful for, by the way, thank you, is really meant to memorialize our intent. What are we trying to accomplish together? We recognize that a project cannot occur at the site if, if the current complex is not prepared, i.e. the current buildings are demolished, and we're able to remediate the environmental activities that were identified in the BEA 1 and 2. We know that we have to have a competent master developer that can do the project, and we're going to go through that process, and I can further explain the RFQ process for selection. And we know that if this is going to happen, it's going to happen over a seven, you know, five to eight-year period, probably a seven-year period based on our financial per forma. And there will be a significant amount of community engagement that will be, we will be facilitating concurrent with the RFQ process to allow citizens to better understand this process in general, as well as some foundational elements of what they're interested in for a development. So based on our due diligence, we've, we've identified what may be highest and best use for Marquette, which factors into the, you know, the potential private investment and factors into the whole way that we calculated the TIF tables. But we also need to hear from the citizens, and the developer ultimately will want to hear from the citizens. The best-case scenario moving forward for this project is we are able to memorialize our intent with the city, which really allows us to go back to our other partners through the RFQ process and say, this is what's important to the city of Marquette. We're being open and transparent about that. The NMU Foundation has a special committee formed that will oversee the selection and criteria for proposed, I guess, responses to the RFQ, basically the, the track record of developers that are interested in further conversations about this project. And ultimately, if there is a competent developer that is interested, facilitate the negotiations of what that contract looks like. Our understanding, based on best practice in this area, is that developers do appreciate that community engagement at a, kind of a high level before they're coming to the table, but there's a more in-depth process for the project once they're actually invested and going to be putting the development plan together. So that's sort of the, the plan and the, and the, the plan forward. But I want to be really, really clear, just to summarize. Up until now, the milestones have been environmentally feasible, yes. Financially feasible, yes. And actually very favorable to the city and through the plan we're proposing through the TIF to get the project on the tax rolls as soon as possible and only draw down the amount necessary that is essentially facilitating a development to occur, which is the site prep. That's, the good news is that there's more room in that TIF for other types of things, which I know you've talked about, and some of them have been mentioned here today. I think as early as next week, the RFQ will go out for master developers. We've already had a lot of inquiry and interest based, just organically. And the NMU Foundation Special Committee will oversee that RFQ process. And once a master developer is selected, then the NMU Foundation Board will have to make a decision about whether it has sufficiently satisfied to move forward and close on the agreement with U.P. Health System Marquette. So that was sort of a long-winded answer, but I hope, I want to make sure I covered everything because there was a lot said, and it gets, it makes me a little bit concerned that maybe we weren't very clear at the February 14th meeting, or maybe it just needs to be restated.
I think the restating, I mean, two weeks' time and the opportunity to... I think the restating, I mean, two weeks' time and the opportunity to say it again so that we better understand what we're voting on, what the purpose of all this is. It's a, it's a big, very important project. So thank you for being willing to come up and explain that. I think, I, I, the only things I want to say now are, again, I think we're, the, the sense I have is that we want to make sure that, that, that this project is inclusive and that it, it, so that there's work for residents who are here, that, that we, make sure we pay a prevailing wage across what we control, which is the entire Brownfield, potentially the entire Brownfield budget. And that the housing that's being provided will be housing that meets the tremendous needs that were identified in the Housing Committee report. And so the fact that this exists is a good thing. It does, does feel a little fuzzy at the moment. And so I, because it doesn't, and you're, but what I'm hearing is that the specificity is going to come in the Brownfield plan. And, and then, then what comes in the RFQ, which is going to be issued by the foundation, is not something that we can control at the city level. So we strongly encourage that the affordability and, as folks have heard me say, but I think I have the other commission members, the green aspects of making sure that this is a sustainable and resilient project going forward on the day that the report was released about how we can make a difference on climate change if we act on it now, and that we have absolutely the best labor practices. And we strengthen that as much as possible. And I guess I'm asking, the foundation understands that those are our priorities.
Yeah, Commissioner, yeah, hearing you loud and clear, and thank you. And I think the, the main response or comment I would make is it's really our goal to have a wide-open aperture on the RFQ process. We don't want to be too restrictive because we want to rely on professionals that have experience with projects like this to come at us with their ideas and to really allow our, the NMU Foundation Board of Trustees Committee that's overseeing that RFQ process, good latitude in, in seeing what might be a good fit and having further conversations with those potential partners. But, you know, the conversations we're having today and we continue to have regularly with staff, we, we understand the values that are important to the commission. And again, without being too prescriptive, is very much the reason why we went to the ad hoc housing report, thought that that was a really good benchmark to use. It's new, it, a lot of time and effort was put into it, it was, you know, adopted by the commission. And so we're using that as a, as a guidepost for guiding us on how we're talking about the blend of housing. And also, just to reinforce, we know that this, there are, there is a lot of different types of need for housing in Marquette, and so we want to make sure that we're addressing that across the spectrum, including the point that was made during our last talk about senior housing. So, you know, there, there may be developers that specialize in senior housing but don't specialize in, you know, mixed-use commercial. So I mean, we're really looking forward to seeing the, the variety of interests that we're hoping to see.
Thank you.
I see your assistant manager, Sean Hobbin, said something he wanted to say, maybe in case he might need you, Dave, I'm not sure.
I just wanted to say for the benefit of the public that all Brownfield plans are publicly available, all captured TIF funds, there are public records of all expenditures are approved at public Brownfield meetings. So in terms of transparency for the use of public dollars, it's 100% and complete.
Thank you, Sean. Did the commission have any other questions for Dave at this point in time? I know Pro Tem Mayor, you had something you wanted to say. Just wanted to make sure so we don't keep him hanging out up here while we continue to discuss. Thank you, Dave. We need you, we know where to find you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Pro Tem Mayor, I know you had your hand up.
Thank you. It was a little bit ago, but I, I did want to mention that although it may not be specifically mentioned, I don't think in the ad hoc housing report as far as how many units specifically we needed for, you know, the missing middle or affordable income groups. And Commissioner Bonzel, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it does mention the explanation as well as the percentages of what missing middle and affordable are. It did include the income percentages of the community and the number of housing units that we currently have in the city broken down by ownership and rental. So indirectly, there's kind of a mention of what those units actually are that the community needs. You would just really have to start piecing some stuff together, but I think in theory it is all there.
Commissioner Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll respond briefly to that. That is, that is accurate. It's actually pretty, it is pretty specific. Although we don't, in, in the ad hoc housing committee report, we, we didn't as a committee have the expertise or the capability to estimate how many, you know, what number of workforce housing duplexes, you know, the city of Marquette needs, for example. That would require a larger study. But we were able to clearly define, it's, it's actually very early on in the report on page four, reading directly from page four of the Housing Committee final report, quote, "Housing is considered affordable for a particular household if that household spends 30% or less of their gross household income on all housing expenses. Low-income housing is housing that is affordable for households earning less than 80% of the area median income in the city of Marquette. And workforce housing is housing, which is mentioned specifically in the MOU, is housing that is affordable for households earning 80 to 120% of the area median income in the city of Marquette, according to the definition of housing affordability adopted by the ad hoc housing committee. And for reference, the city of Marquette's area median income is about, area median household income is about $44,000." So, and, and you can read more, in more detail, but it is very early in the report on pages four and five where we, I, we make, we identify those definitions. And we also do actually have some estimates of, you know, in terms of concrete dollars and cents, what that would look like for renters, you know, what fair market rents look like, as well as for affordable owner-occupied homes. So there, there are some estimates in there for sure. And, and all of those definitions and all of that data is based on, you know, very widely accepted standards that are used by entities like HUD, you know, the Federal Housing Agency, MISTDA, that's included in the report.
Commissioner Handley. Oh, sorry. Commissioner Bonzel, did you have something else? Okay. Commissioner Handley set her hand up for a moment, I'll come right back to Commissioner Stonehouse.
I just wanted to point out the one thing that I forgot to mention. I know it had been mentioned before that we would be losing $150,000 a year in taxes for the 15-year thing, but it was discussed at our February 14th meeting and really put out into detail that they are including $4 million in infrastructure in this for us, the College Avenue rebuild, the water pipes underneath it, all the different stuff that we won't be required to do as a city. So in losing 2.25 million, we're going to be gaining 4 million. It's, it's a win for the city in that respect. So I wanted to make sure to point that out. And then I also wanted to point out that that hospital has been sitting empty for three years at this point. We, if we don't do something to work with these, with people that are willing to work with us right now, it could be sitting empty for decades to come. So looking at this and working with people like the foundation, trying to make moves and going forward is a good plan as far as I'm concerned. We do need to be responsible with our decisions and watch everything that we're making, but I think that working with them is a great plan and trying to fix that property so that it can be used in the upcoming years.
Mr. Stonehouse? Pro Tem Mayor.
Two things. One, I would like to slightly add to what Commissioner Handley said and also mention the fact that if we don't move forward, the, with the old hospital property, Duke LifePoint could in theory move the current administrative staff there and then appeal for a tax exemption under the fact that it would essentially be an obsolete and abandoned building. So the current tax revenue we're getting, we could lose anyways. At least that's what I would do if I was them. Just saying. I'm sure they've thought of it. I did actually want to make one small amendment that is not going to cause any problems, I promise. On page three, it would be... I think my two-year-old daughter could have went through the alphabet faster than me there. I would like to add under three, it would be under 3L, so 3M, employment of apprentices through a licensed regional trades program.
Can you make that into a motion, please?
I move to add under item 3M, employment of apprenticeships through a licensed regional trades program.
Do we have a second on that motion? Commissioner Handley?
I second that.
Discussion, Commissioner Mayor?
You know, I, it was probably the last comment I think I gave at our work session two weeks ago that I, it was really important to me that we try to employ as much locally as we can and also keep as much of the, the massive amount of this investment, the money here locally in our community. And I think this is, this helps accomplish both of that and I've just, if we're looking for a broad language of something, we want it to be included in this project, I wanted to make sure it was in this.
Commissioner Handley? Second to that. Other discussion on this amendment? Commissioner Davis?
I find that an intriguing amendment and very attractive. I'm just curious the thoughts of Northern's Foundation on if that limits the, as you called it, the aperture of the, of the potential developer. And is that okay if I ask that question? Okay.
Thank you for the question, Commissioner. The answer is, I don't know. You know, as we've said all along, we are not a developer. We are merely trying to facilitate this project in a way that benefits the community and we're trying to bring our relationships and experience to bear to make that happen. Ultimately, that's going to come down to, you know, whichever master developer is hopefully selected. But I, I don't know how this project doesn't, just my personal comment, I don't know how it gets done without local labor. I mean, we, this is going to be a large project. It's going to be, I think that, you know, the community goodwill and community connectedness is going to absolutely be written into the RFQ, which is, relates to the comment that Commissioner Mayor made. And, you know, I, I don't think that we would, I would, I don't think that the Board of Trustees would be interested in selecting a developer that's not interested in higher, hiring local, in partnering with local companies and workers. I will add as an anecdote to that, we have, we've had really good conversations with our construction management program at the university about ways that they can also provide some insight to ways that we can incorporate students and particularly students in the construction management program to get on-the-job experience and experiential learning as part of this project. So these are things that we talk about and are considering all the time.
Okay. So the amendment, as stated, refers specifically to apprentices. And you talked about local workforce, which is great.
Yeah. Yeah. And I, the, the answer is, I don't know. You know, I, I don't see, I, I don't, I don't see this amendment with being a, a major barrier to our efforts moving forward, but I don't have the subject matter expertise on the workforce and hiring as a developer would.
I, I think it's a very attractive idea. I, I guess my initial thought was to leave things as they are because you don't know how well it'll affect it. And I, and I feel that Northern has an interest in the construction management program and working with local labor. You know, I don't know. I don't know how I would feel about this amendment. I, I think that I could trust Northern and their foundation to, to look at those things as they consider a master developer. And I, I feel that the memorandum is good the way it is.
Pro Tem Mayor?
I would just say, I think that was a very fair question to ask and I was hesitant to make any sort of amendment for that exact reason, that I didn't want to change the document necessarily, but much like everything else in this memorandum, it is rather vague and it's not super specific. So I mean, it's, I'm not, you know, the amendment itself doesn't say every single person working has to be, you know, an apprentice or anything like that. There's, there's still that room there. I guess was the only thing I wanted to add.
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I think that, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor, for bringing, you know, that amendment forward. I, I think the more I think about it, the more, the more I like it. I do feel that it still leaves the developer, because ultimately that amendment that you just made, right, that's affecting the future development plan that the NMU Foundation will agree to with the master developer. And, and I think in the same way that, you know, we want affordable and we are requiring that affordable and workforce housing be included as a minimum component of the project, but we're still leaving that flexibility for different opportunities and different options to be explored by the developer. I think this provides a similar level of flexibility for them to meet the requirements of your amendment without necessarily, you know, dramatically increasing their costs or having negative impacts. So I personally could support it.
Any other discussion on the amendment? I might as well just speak now, I've been waiting my turn here. I try to facilitate the best I can, but it's been difficult. So I see this memorandum of understanding as a way that we can move forward with, you know, a promise to work together with the NMU Foundation, with the Brownfield Authority, with the entities involved in the future. And as a way to potentially tap into some one-time state or federal dollars that could potentially be on the table, that could lessen the burden financially for either the city or the NMU Foundation. And that's the big piece here. That's something that, you know, I'm hopeful that will come forward. And that's why I asked the city manager to, to put this on this agenda in a pretty quick fashion. I wanted to make sure that we were able to discuss it and also not have any doors closed to opportunity. So I'm hopeful that if we can get this through, you know, with or without amendments, that it will provide some additional opportunity that will become known, hopefully in short order. So that, to me, is the biggest ask. Certainly, there are more details, we'll be reviewing a Brownfield plan likely in the next meeting or than in two meetings from now. So we're going to need to start thinking about that. It's not a, you know, a couple of months from now kind of a thing. We're, we're pretty quick order here that this timeline needs to happen. So I am hopeful that we can continue the discussions with our city manager in the meantime so that she can act as that facilitator and answer our questions, help understand the nuances of the project as it progresses, obviously without any violation of the Open Meetings Act. That's one way that we can keep up to date while we continue to have discussions in the open meetings that we do have. But I just want the commission to be prepared and the public to be prepared. We're doing everything we can to keep all parties moving forward on this. So I just wanted to say that I see, I mean, it's, we have said it before in our last special meeting, critical project for the city of Marquette, one of the most important that I think we'll see come across our desk here. So I just want to do everything in my power to get it through. But I know we've got a lot of questions and I share a lot of the concerns, but this is the, one of, you know, the first step in, in voting anyway, because the last meeting we had was a special meeting with no voting that occurred. So definitely take it seriously, I want to make sure we're doing the right, you know, right by our, our voters, right by our citizens, and I do think that that's what's being accomplished here. Okay. So that being said, let's go ahead and take a vote just on the amendment by Pro Tem Mayor that does not require a roll call vote, so I'll go ahead and ask. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no.
No.
Motion passes six to one on the amendment. I'm going to ask our city clerk if he could please read the entire motion with the amendment for us, and we're going to go ahead and take a vote on that right now.
Certainly. So the motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Davis, is now to approve the memorandum of understanding with the amendment to add to section 2B, subsection 3, add an item M, employment of apprenticeships through a licensed regional trades program. So this would be to approve the MOU with that amendment.
With the amendment. And this does not require a roll call vote, correct? All right. All right, Commissioners, let's go ahead and take a vote. Commissioner Hill?
Yes. So avoiding me voting too, too early again, it, it, it is, I guess, just one more time because it does, this, the May 31st date, just to be perfectly clear, is what's driving the February 28th vote. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
And the entity that is choosing the May 31st vote is which entity in this? And the entity that is choosing the May 31st vote is which entity in this, in this piece?
So it is between Duke Life Point and the NMU Foundation. And it was, it's a date that has been extended already.
Okay, so this would be pretty clear with the public and everybody that there had been, right, there'd been a goal to have this closing date before this, but then, and because of the other things that have to come in the multilayered, to get all the money together and to choose a developer and have a closing by May 31st, it needs to happen on February 28th. I just, I'm just trying to be, a lot, a lot's been said. I, and that we're all going to be seeing a Brownfield plan, which means that it has to go to the Brownfield Authority before it comes to us.
We could schedule a public hearing before it comes to us, we're unclear on that timeline, but the final approval will be on us.
So if you have other concerns about this project and proposal, I recommend that folks go to the Brownfield meeting and the Brownfield Authority meeting, which happens on Thursday mornings. When's the next meeting?
I believe it's the third Thursday of the month. Let me check what the next meeting is.
Yeah, so over at the, so, so there's a way to just be, again, what the process is and where decisions are going to be made. That'll be happening at the Brownfield Authority meeting, and that will be another place where some of these key objectives around who's doing the work, how the work is done, and where the money is allocated is, are going to be decided. And then the fact that, so we've identified apprenticeships in the development plan, we have not specifically identified any particular green approaches. And I will just, since this is, I want to say that there are actually multiple green, different ways of certifying green building and what's appropriate for emissions, reductions around carbon. Those are things that I'm actually, that in our strategic planning process that we're going to be going through, those will be identified. But understanding that this project needs to move forward at a very rapid pace, I'm, I'm willing to accept that this will be revealed during conversation for this particular plan, but I'm really hoping that as part of our ongoing strategic planning process, we have clear goals around climate that we do identify so that as projects come in front of us, we do understand where they fit with those criteria. Just wanted to make that plain. And thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. We are now moving on to our second public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address unless you've already stated it at this meeting.
Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic. I ask your indulgence, I wish to take a picture of what I'm looking at right now. I promise you, I won't make you look any different than you look right now. There was a lot of talk on Facebook over the weekend, and certain members of the commission were challenged as to certain activities of the city. And there was the statement made, I wasn't on the commission then, or I was barely on the commission a year then. I want you to know that as this situation, I'm not even going to call it a program, as this situation continues and gets worse and worse and worse, and people try to pretend that it was someone else's idea and I wasn't in the room, I got the pictures. You were in the room and y'all voted for it. Commissioner Handley, if you reread the memorandum of understanding, the city is on the hook for upgrading utilities. That money is coming from the city, not from anyone else. And in terms of, I'm an attorney and I've done about, well, there's, I've done more agreements than I can count. And I can only tell you this, whenever I'm dealing with a client who's dealing with other people, I always do a credibility check on the other people. And you have just agreed to sign an agreement with two organizations that are known for being completely at odds with their employees. There have been multiple strikes, multiple issues with the Northern faculty, multiple issues with the Duke Life Point, new unions having been formed, and you have hopped into an agreement to do business with these people. In other words, you have put the city in an agreement with people that can't even get along with their own employees. And if you think that doesn't matter because you're the city, nobody changes how they treat people unless they have to. And you're giving Duke Life Point and Northern everything they want. And I want you to know, I will be reminding people that you gave them everything they wanted, and there were other options on the table. They needed this piece of paper tonight to run to their bankers to get their financing. And anytime anybody in any agreement tells my client, you're in a hurry, I ask my client, are we in a hurry? Because I'm not in a hurry. And when someone else is in a hurry, that's when you dig your heels in and you get a better deal, none of which, again, you chose to do. So when it push comes to shove, you did it, and you get to live with it. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Three minutes, name and physical address, please.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Feldman. I live at 1630 Center Street. A couple of things. First, I do agree with using local workpeople, whether they're in college in the construction pro, I have no problem with that. I think it's great. But, and it's not a criticism of them, but you get a master builder in here, they normally come in with their own crews, and they don't look locally. They spend their money here, yes, but then they'll go home and there goes money out the door. I noticed Margaret's remarks, the first time she spoke went over everybody's head, just sort of like totally ignored, but she's right. You have dug us a hole. This city is in debt $1.3 million, and you are coming after taxpayers every year to try to make up that money. That's not right. Lastly, I think lastly, the last meeting I attended, you said, well, we're going to hold the builders, trying to hold the builders to their prices, they quote us in the beginning. There is no builder worth his or her salt who's going to hold their prices. They're going to go for whatever the current level is, and if they have to increase their prices for construction, they're going to do it because they are in business to make money. I certainly would do it. And I'm a retired English teacher, I don't begin to understand business, but I do understand that if there's a way to make a profit, I will do it. The other thing is, I got to talk fast. The other thing is, you have to, when you were, you were saying, well, you know, the average income is $44,000, we have to hold 30% for this, 12%. You've got to decide first, what is affordable housing? Is that $800 a month? Is it 600? My first apartment almost 40 years ago was $800 a month. That was not low-income housing. Is this what you're going to consider as low income? Can the workforce people afford this? Because if they can't, there's no place for them to go. You're right back to square one. And my feeling about the hospital, you know, the university bought the hospital, that means they bought it with warts and all. It should be their responsibility. And if the hospital has, or the foundation has 15 years for a tax abatement, that means 15 years before the street in front of the hospital will be fixed. I can't think of the name of the street. College, thank you, before college will be fixed. That's 15 years. You are talking about taking money from government plans and programs. You're, in your minds, you've already taken the money. You don't have that money. And the condition that our government is now in, you may never get that money. So let's not jump quite. I applaud the attempts.
Your time is up, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Brian Kerrigan, 800 block of High Street. I'd like to premise my public comments with the statement that I am fully in support of a quality development concept as proposed by the NMU Foundation. However, I have concerns when it comes to the expedited timelines and commitments from the city without having enough time to engage stakeholders, obtain enough essential information regarding the development project. What should equitable development actually look like? They include quality of life outcomes, such as affordable, obtainable, and senior housing, expanded local work opportunities, living wage opportunities that include area standards and prevailing wages. The project must provide a fair and equitable bidding process that is equitably experienced by the people currently living and working within the community, such as the amendment that included local registered apprentices to be included. Many in this community believe that the best investment and quality of construction should include a consideration for a project labor agreement between the owner, developer, and local stakeholders. I hope the NMU Foundation will set a new precedence for transparency and accountability when it comes to large-scale projects. In the past, private developers and planners often gave lip service to equitable developments using specific terms, community engagement, and community benefit, but these concepts are rarely actually captured and incorporated into the planning in a way that advances the input and community equity. Too often in the past, developers have consistently treated community engagement as a more involved form of public notice to the community. What's missing in the accountability, what's missing is the accountability and engagement of actual benefits to the community apart from limited tax revenues that may take a long time to be realized. In these cases, we have to wonder why equitable developmental policies are always left up to the public officials who are usually stuck between impossible political dynamics. The answer is that the history of large projects in the past and developmental planning has created a certain dynamic, a dynamic that I hope that the foundation has a way of making well and doing the best thing in the best interest of all the community members. And without that, I would encourage and urge all commissioners to start considering an opportunity for community benefit agreements that put in place strategies and opportunities to have the speakers of this community, the ones that are going to be impacted the most, the public tax-paying citizens have a voice in the process. Thank you for your hard work and your commitment.
Tony Boyle, 401 West Michigan Street. I kind of feel like I wasted my first public comment. I did not realize that the timeline for the due diligence process was so rushed. You know, Commissioner Hill talked about what she was hearing from the public, and if you talk to people, what this whole project really sounds like is a shell game to just kick it back over to Veridia. I mean, when the, when the Veridia plans fell through with the hospital, that was in the due diligence process. Then the NMU Foundation took over with Bob Mahaney, CEO of Veridia, on, as, on the board of NMU trustees, as well as Tammy Savoy, who is also on the board for the Duke Life Point Hospital. Every time NMU has been asked for information on this, they have hidden behind an NDA. There has not been any clear communication, there still doesn't seem to be. I mean, this announcement went out over the weekend, you know, none of us had a lot of time to look over what was going on, what's being discussed. We're being pushed by other people's timelines, other people's interests. You know, there's, you were talking about a good faith agreement being made here, but there's no evidence yet that the city is being treated in good faith. We need to learn a lot more of what's going on before moving forward with this. May 31st is going to come up very quickly. There are a lot of concerns that still need to be addressed, as you have all been raising. And I would encourage people to actually check out a Northwind article, it's a letter to the editor from November 11th of last year, talking about very important concerns on this project. And these are answers that we need. I mean, no one here really feels like we've been in the loop. We all feel kind of put out. And, you know, it's the, it's the job of our government, elected officials, staff, and the folks coming in who want to do business and build within our community to actually be transparent with what they're trying to do. Because we could all be for the same things, but we don't know it and we can't foster that environment without clear, open communication. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Michelle Metz. I live at 400 East College. Just for fun, I ran a couple of the numbers that the retired English teacher was asking us. And at 100% of the median income, which is 44K, $1,100 is the maximum dollar amount per month, and 880 is the maximum dollar amount for low income. That's just real quick, back of the napkin, whatever. I, I'm glad that we're entering into this memorandum of understanding, but I'm also really concerned, and I, and I share the concerns of everybody that has come up. But I was here for, on the day when we tried not to include the Ad hoc Housing Commission report in the strategic plan, and we tried to leave it out altogether so that it would not be any specific numbers for low-income housing and all of that included in the strategic plan. So I'm glad that made it in, and I'm glad it's being referenced in this project. And I really think we need to push and understand that there are a lot of people in this community who cannot afford more than $1,100 a month. And that's real. And those people don't have to go and live in Ishpeming and Nagani just because they don't make as much. That's not fair. That's not cool. We need to make sure that we are accommodating everyone and that we're real about it when we talk to the developers and when we talk to the NMU people. And we say, we have a trade school halfway to Nagani on the road up there, hire those kids, teach them how to do the work. Okay, that's, that's a good idea. So that's my comment. I think we need to keep moving forward with progressive, open-minded ideas and not go backwards. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. I, I actually decided to come up here because of something, I finally got to listen to all your comments after I spoke last time, which was a month and a half ago now. First, I want to say, please, I don't tell you where I work so that it becomes an issue. I think there's a lot of people who want to make comments who are afraid that financially their business might take a hit if it's ever associated. So the fact that I was associated with Mining Journal, I am no longer working there. I have to say that I don't remember telling you guys that I worked there. But at the same time, moving on, I will tell you, though, I work at a city facility now. I don't know anything about what was going on with this whole NMU discussion. I haven't been watching, I've been working. So I will have to reserve my comments, but I will say, for the NMU, NMU-MGH combination, I was up here asking for that road to get fixed. And I also put a bid in for the actual, or a proposal for the actual building, and Mr. Stonehouse, you were there for that, Ms. Hill, or Ms. Davis, I think you were too, at the actual hospital. That was probably 2014 or so, maybe 20, whenever they were getting rid of it the first time, they didn't know what to do with it. I made an offer, and you guys said, no matter what happens, it should be profitable. Going to NMU makes it unprofitable, or at least nonprofit businesses now. And I wonder, Mr. Stonehouse, that was a big push you've had for a couple of years. At the same time, I'm now here to talk to you about where I do work, and that is Lakeview Arena, a city facility. I'm wondering, because I just found out today that you're cutting down all the ice at the end of the month, but you're not putting anything in place otherwise. So I've had a lot of suggestions, a lot of people come to me because I made these suggestions for Cliff Stowe. All right, so since you sold Cliff Stowe, I can't do this on Cliff Stowe, but I work at the Lakeview Arena. And now that you're going to have no ice at Lakeview Arena, can I have RC drone races? Can I have actual RC cars? Can I put in roller hockey? Can we skate around? Can we skate around? Can we play putt-putt golf? Can we put in arcades that actually bring in virtual games? These are all things that I think a facility, a city facility on the actual bike path could be profitable. But right now, I'm told by the people who work at the actual city facility that you folks, the budget people, are the ones who are cutting them off. Now, at this point, I've been asking for multiple years for whatever funding things, but apparently, in August, I've got to come up here and ask for funds to play hockey in June? I mean, right now, you guys have just cut off all of the hockey for the summer. I have over 100 people wanting to play roller hockey, and right now, there's nowhere in Hockeyville to play roller hockey. We have one sport in the winter only, and apparently that's good enough, but I don't think it is.
Anyone else for public comment? Maybe you can only comment once during a public comment session. You're not able to comment again.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot. I was just on a roll, I'm sorry.
Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. That will bring us to comments from the commission. We will start off with Commissioner Davis and go down the line.
Thank you. You know, I always appreciate the public comments, and I thank you all for your input and comments to us commissioners. I would like to congratulate our police department on their successful re-accreditation status with the Michigan Enforcement Accreditation Commission. I don't know how many of we commissioners, or you in the chambers, or anyone else out there in the public have dealt with accreditation processes, but they are difficult, they're time-consuming, and they take a great deal of leadership. And so I do want to recognize the leadership of Acting Patrol Captain Ryan Grimm and Officer Nicholas Gazzetta for heading this process, and just really appreciate our police department for achieving and maintaining the high standards that they do.
Commissioner Haley?
Thank you. I wanted to address a couple of things that were said in public comment, just to go over it. I would like to point out that the money for the redoing of College Avenue will come from the brownfield money, which is the $40 million that would already be part of this, so it will not come directly from the city. I also want to point out that what we did today and what we will agree with signing is very clearly stated, it is not a legal document. It is an agreement that going forward in good faith so that we can work, work towards something that will become a legal document. We have by no means tied ourselves to anything or stopped us from making decisions that will change this. Either the NMU Foundation or us at any point can look and say, "This is not fitting," or "It is fitting." And that's what we want to point out, is this is the first step to get a developer to come out to us and say, "Okay, this is my idea. This is what we can give you." And we can say, "Okay, that's great, we want to add this, or this, or this." And we can work together to find the brownfield plan that will work for the city. I fear that there are a lot of misconceptions about how brownfield works. It is a very complicated game. I would encourage anyone who wants to know to reach out to Sean Havens, because he knows just about everything you can want to know about brownfields, and he is always willing to teach and help you. And if you have any questions about how the tax incremental financing is going to work for the city and how it affects us, he would, I know he would be, and any of us would be, we're not going to be nearly as knowledgeable as he is in that scenario. But learning how they work so that there's no misconstruing of how this is going forward, we're not giving away our city taxpayers' dollars. We are trying to make it to where we earn $4 million a year on a property that right now we're making $150,000 on. And if it sits longer and becomes more of a problem, we're not going to be able to do anything with it, and it's going to cost us more in the long run to do something. It is a good step to try and curb something that could become an even bigger problem than it is now. Also, I do want to point out that it won't be 15 years before College Avenue is finished. Their proposed timeline is seven to eight years for finishing of the entire project, so it would be before then. Other than that, I'm good.
Lieutenant Mayor?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to clarify a couple of things I heard in public comment. We're talking about the Foundation, not the university itself. I know that got brought up a little bit, but it's two separate entities. They obviously work very closely together, but they are completely different entities. The Foundation has nothing to do with the faculty or anything going on with those labor negotiations. The Foundation is a nonprofit that works with Northern. Again, wanted to emphasize, it's right there in the first paragraph, if anyone wants to look it up online, that it is not a legally binding document that we approved, but it's more so, we're trying to work in good faith moving forward, and hopefully, this will assist with getting some of that state or federal funding, which obviously would be great for the project overall. I understand some of the public comment as well about feeling like you guys are out of the loop, and to be honest with you, until a couple of weeks ago, I didn't really feel like we were really in the loop either, and probably until leading up to that work session. But as much, as much as that frustrates me, because I can't, I can't give members of the public answers to questions, because I don't have the answers either, I understand that the Foundation had a lot that they were trying to get figured out before they could give us any information, and if they did that too early and things changed, then that's what we would be talking about instead. So I understand why they needed to wait longer, and it's frustrating, but I don't think it was in a deliberate attempt to hide anything from any of us. And I think with that, I'm going to yield a thanks, everyone.
Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you, everyone. And thank you, staff, very much. Thank you. This is a lot of work and a lot of time that they have put into this, well outside these, these meetings. I want to bring up that, yeah, this is a good faith agreement, and that therefore, what comes next are the binding agreements, and agreement is only binding when there's accountability. And that piece of accountability has not, is the piece that I think we need to next pay very close attention to. There's the principles and values and goals that we've identified. There are definitions of affordable housing in the housing report. I encourage you to read that report. There's also some really good books about housing that talk about what those numbers mean. So that has been done, but you, it's in the report. But then, yeah, again, how do we have the accountability so that if things aren't going well, what are then the consequences? I think that's the other side of this equation. And where the city's role is in that, where the NMU Foundation Board's role is in that, and then the NM, whether, and what that relationship is between NMU Foundation and NMU, and NMU as a public university. So I would encourage at our next, as we get into the levels of actual binding documents, we're going to need to have that accountability fully spelled out. And so I'm willing to go forward with this good faith, but these next steps are going to need accountability written into them very clearly so that we can understand. I'll stop repeating myself, but you understand, I think we understand the value of that. And that a community benefit agreement would be a way to lay that out. As someone said, there are going to be multiple layers over the course of years of development, and so we want to ensure that it's really clear what's coming back to the community. There's the relationship between this, what's going to happen in NMU, but there's also the relationship between what's going to happen and the rest of Marquette. So, for example, the, the Piers project that's going to be finished next, next construction season, where we're going to be able to walk out on the water by the Or Dock, you know, down by the Hampton Inn, is, is directly a result of a brownfield agreement, community benefit agreement. That money was there because that brownfield was done. Those piers are going to be there as a community benefit. There were years between the time when that was agreed to and the work actually happening. So I think just being clear that, that we can do more when we have a brownfield agreement, because there is a required community benefit, but let's be clear what that is and help make that connection for the public that isn't doing this and living this 24/7 as Sean is, and, and others. And finally, thank you for picking those numbers, Michelle Metz, on saying, you know, affordable rent is $1,100. Theoretically, right? Of course, that's assuming that someone is making the average wage, which means that there are a lot of people not making the average wage. And the question of wages, and the question of what our community, and who can live in our community, again, I'm going back to that strategic planning again, but I think it's going to be incredibly important that we are now going to have a way to talk about those issues through that strategic planning that we had to compress into this conversation, but I really encourage everyone to be a part of that. And the, the question of it going to the NMU, I know that was directed at Commissioner Stonehouse, but there are, there's a tax advantage that's coming through the property going to NMU, and there are, and it also meant that we had a shortened timeline on the payback of the brownfield that gets it back on the tax rolls faster. So I was confident with that transfer, because it's, we can clearly identify what the benefits are going to be. I just, and finally, I want to say thank you to the snow removal crews that have been dealing with a lot of snow, and I really appreciate things, I think, I think they're doing a great job with some big snowstorms, and then it just didn't stop snowing today. And, yeah, there's some, you know, there's some big snow piles on the corners, you know, they're going to get around to them. Please, please be patient and be careful. We love our winters, means we're going to get a lot of snow, and thank you to the crews that have been doing a great job taking care of a lot of snow.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you, Your Honor. I called the hospital project earlier tonight a centennial project, because it truly is that rare. I think the hospital has been abandoned now about 10 years, and in 10 years' time, we have not had one, zero, zippo, nada, interest in reusing that building. This is the first time that anyone has stepped forward to really take that project on, and I certainly, again, commend the NMU Board of Control for doing that, and the opportunity to bring the city together as a partial facilitator for the brownfield only. That's our only responsibility, is to do the brownfield and provide that funding base for it, which we typically do again for all brownfields, nothing unusual there. And then to bring this project together. We have to be patient with it. It's going to take seven years, and as Commissioner Hill said, the payback on that will be, for brownfield, amazingly quick. They're estimating somewhat lesser, I think around eight years, or nine years, or 10 years. Could be faster, again, depending on how quickly the tax breaks, tax breaks, how quickly it builds out. But that will be a game changer for the city of Marquette, for that area of the city, for the linkage that will bring it into Third Street, the benefits that will come not only to the university, after all, they're the prime mover behind it, but also to the city of Marquette. And I would postulate this question, of all of the agencies and all of the businesses in the city of Marquette, who needs affordable and workforce housing more than the university? There's nobody. So by building this project, they really are taking care of, in a large extent, their opportunities and their needs. And that's, it's not a bad thing, because that also addresses the city's needs. This is a good way of looking at it. On a, on a little different track, we had, we had a great UP 200, if you weren't downtown and watching this start, it was spectacular this year. I think with everybody kind of anxious to get out from COVID and do something, they really had an opportunity to do so. And certainly, too, for the Meyer Games that just finished off this weekend. Again, an opportunity to showcase Marquette and showcase what we can do here in terms of supporting those types of events. We often use the term "community benefit," and we use it in lots of contexts. Commissioner Hill used it in terms of the piers that are being built, based on the brownfield development coming out of the Founder's Landing area. But the roundabouts that we have on Wright Street were also community benefit from some of the project work we've been doing with the folks at Eagle, and keeping that road built and safe. That was part of that operation. You can also look at a community benefit as being the brand-new service center we have also on Wright Street, which was a community benefit that came out of the brownfield that supported the new hospital. So by focusing that opportunity on smaller objects, on smaller things, I guess, a $20 million building wasn't too small. But the point is, it was a benefit that came out of that project that was aimed at, sculpted at, and assembled by city staff, as well as the folks that were building the hospital. So people coming together, not only on the brownfield, on the development side, and on the government side, are able to put those packages together. So bear that in mind as we move down this project and begin to think in terms of community benefit, too, that might be offered by the new project. Thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Banzel?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. So first of all, to everybody who came to the meeting tonight, and people, other people who reached out to me separately before the meeting, thank you, and I hear you. I hear your concerns, I hear, you know, some of your hopes and aspirations for this project. And, I mean, speaking for myself, I am 110% committed to making sure that the commitments that are contained in this MOU, that will be contained in the RFQ, that the Foundation, the NMU Foundation will be putting out, and that will be contained in the, in a future brownfield plan are all met. This project is a centennial project, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, but by that same token, it needs to be a project that benefits the community as a whole. So I agree, you know, with Commissioner Hill, I think she said it very well, that, you know, the next steps in this project, specifically, you know, the brownfield plan, are going to need more specificity, more accountability. And, and I think that we will be able to get there, we will be able to get that. I will be, as always, explaining all of my, my votes that I took here tonight, including on the MOU. You know, I always post public explanations of all the votes that I take, usually within a couple of days, always within, you know, about a week or two of these meetings. So I'll have a lot more detailed information, kind of my thoughts on this, this process, what was going through my mind when I was deciding how to vote in the next couple of days here. But I do think it's important that, you know, we, we remember that this is an opportunity that our community can't pass up. The benefits, not only are long-term, potentially, with regards to that massive increase in tax revenue after that 15-year brownfield plan, potentially less than 15-year brownfield plan, but also short-term, in terms of, you know, this project will be getting built out over the next six or seven years. And, for example, you know, the College Avenue reconstruction was mentioned, that could potentially happen much sooner. And the way brownfield plans work is the city would be reimbursed for the expenses incurred, you know, by taxes captured from that property specifically. So, you know, thereby saving, you know, taxpayers and the rest of the city that expense. So, you know, it's really important to make sure that we're all paying attention to the details, we're really doing our research, and that the city is communicating those details to the public in a transparent way. So I hope that you all stay engaged. I hope that you all keep coming to these meetings, and please, don't hesitate to reach out if you want to talk on the phone. You can contact me, my, you can email me as well, my contact information's on the city website, and, and please reach out to me on Facebook, too, if you're on Facebook, and watch out for those explanations of that vote. Hopefully, that'll answer some questions that people have. But I think this has the potential, if we do it right, and we have that accountability built into the final brownfield plan, to be a truly transformational project for the community that will meet a lot of our community needs, like affordable housing, like senior housing, like creating new public spaces, like sustainability. So I'm excited about it, cautiously optimistic moving forward, and I just hope, we need more public engagement, so please keep it up.
And I would just like to add that, you know, I've been involved with city staff at some of the meetings with the NMU Foundation and Duke LifePoint, you know, we've had some other parties involved, and we're looking at maybe making those a little more regular. And I'm committed to providing as much transparency as I can through the process, and I know that the NMU Foundation is committed to the same. They've talked about some public listening sessions that would be coming in the future, so the public can look forward to those. Maybe a hybrid of virtual or in-person, still being determined, but, you know, that's one avenue. Our meetings are another avenue, the public can certainly voice their concerns. The Brownfield Authority will have a meeting, you know, either this next meeting or the one after, that people will want to pay attention to. And we- And we are listening. I do appreciate the folks who come here and make a comment and, you know, let us know what their concerns are. We hear you. It's definitely something we're considering as we move forward with the next steps in this process. So that's what I have to say on that. I did want to echo Commissioner Stonehouse's comments about the UP 200. It was a fantastic event, with a lot of legislators in town, a great opportunity to talk about some of the ongoing projects and opportunities that we have coming up at the City of Marquette. And again, the Meyer State Games was last Friday night, and there was a wonderful fireworks display there by Great Lakes Fireworks Co., and the Marquette Mountain team did a nice job. And I know that was also sponsored by NMU, so they really are a community partner, and look forward to working with them. That's all I have. City manager, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just a couple of things. Community office hours will be March 9th at Peter White Public Library at 10:00 a.m. It's a great opportunity to come in and have a seat and a cup of coffee and just talk. We cover a variety of things, anything that anybody wants to talk about. It would be a great opportunity also to learn more about Brownfield funding, because generally, Assistant City Manager Sean Havens is there as well. So please swing on by. So if you haven't had enough of us in the morning, please swing by. In the evening, for the Pigs in Heat Fire Relief Fund Charity Game, that will be on, again, March 9th at 6:45 p.m. And you can get tickets by swinging by the Police Department or the Fire Department. And picking up a ticket, I do believe they are a dollar apiece. This is a great, great charity game to attend, and a lot of fun. It does put our police and fire departments against each other, so it's kind of fun to watch. But I will be dropping the puck, I believe, at 6:45, so please, please make sure you swing on by. And again, I just want to echo, I think, Commissioner Hill, your comments on our plowing crew. They work hard. They work, it seems, nonstop. So they are working in the daytime, they are working in the evening. So please, if you see them, give them a nice little wave and give them some extra space, and please just understand that they are working hard. But if you do have an issue to report, please feel free to call, but we are working on it, especially those snowbanks that have accumulated at this point in time. So a big thank you and a big shout out to them. They are working hard. That's all. Thank you.
We are adjourned at 7:48 p.m. Thanks, everyone.